Time to start our public hearing.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams. Number one, public hearing. An ordinance to declare as surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below to sell on GovDeals.com. Janet Thurman.
Good afternoon. These are some vehicles that are not in running condition any longer and the equipment is in poor condition, so the departments have surplus them to us and we're asking for permission to sell these on GovDeals.
Any questions?
Number two, an ordinance to approve and declare police confiscated bikes as surplus and to be donated to churches and other nonprofit organizations. There are 13 seized bikes, Janet Thurman.
These bikes have remained unclaimed, so the police department has turned them over for surplus and we're asking the council to approve us to be able to donate these to nonprofit organizations.
Louis Bostick, 112 Elm Drive. Do you check if the bicycles have a license?
The police department does.
Is that pretty routine?
Okay. Number three, an ordinance declaring an emergency restraint chair surplus property and providing for a donation to benefit public safety to the Tansville Parish Sheriff's Office. Janet Thurman.
This is a chair we've had since 2008. It's brand new. When they bought it, they didn't know that we had to have a nurse or medical staff on scene anytime they used the chair. Tansville Parish Sheriff's Office does have a nurse on staff 24 hours a day, so we're asking permission to be able to donate this to Tansville Parish Sheriff's Office.
Number four.
Number four, an ordinance to approve budget change form 18-09, transfer $125,000 from Michael J. Kennedy Center Recreation Sales Tax Fund 203 to Parking Improvements FY2018, project number 42011711, for a revised project budget of $200,000. Webb Anderson.
This is what we discussed last time, the parking on the west side of the Kennedy Center will be in the street and sidewalk job that we're about to bid.
Mr. President, how many additional parking spots? Give us.
I think it's, yeah, I was gonna say about 40.
I have a few questions, Mr. President. Just for the mayor. Mayor, just wanna just, did you find any information? I know that we talked at the last hearing, our last meeting, that we purchased the property across the street from the rec center for the purpose of additional parking. Were you able to confirm that?
Desiree and I talked about this. This was, Desiree, you can come up if you want to comment as well. The building, we had two options, whether we put the building across the street or we could put it next to all the building. Because it was a boxing center, we have two pieces of property that were left to buy across the street for this particular venue. And Desiree pointed out that she thought it would be better suited to be put across the street than next to the after-school daycare program and also summer program. Parking spots are still the same, whether they're across the street or not, she just thought it would be better placement and you can speak more on that.
I have a, if you're my, just had a couple of questions to continue if I could. So would you, did we determine that we purchased the property across the street for the purpose of parking?
We purchased it for the boxing program, so whether it was for parking or building.
I don't think we, did you find that, Tonya?
It's only the minutes that I prepared, that I gave to you. I don't have the minutes with me, this is what I, what you requested I sent to you.
Right, and I read that and it said that we approved that space for parking. I mean, this, and a question, the other question I had is if we, have we done any work to determine from a cost perspective, does it make more sense to build an additional standalone building for boxing versus adding on to the existing structure that we currently have? Have you got any?
Well, there are a couple of problems with the structure we have. Number one, we have a two-inch gas line that runs completely through and right up to the side of the building along with the air conditioning unit center on that side. People move them? Yes. So that's when we talked about alternatives.
Something, if we've done it.
So anything can be done and we can prolong this as long as your life.
No, I mean, I'm not trying to prolong, I'm just asking, just asking questions, you know, because, you know, I'm just thinking that, to me, and I'm not a construction guy, but adding, adding an additional facility, you know, you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to staff an additional facility that's away from the current building, it's a standalone building. I would think building a standalone building versus adding on to an existing structure would be more expensive. And if we've already purchased the land for the purpose of parking, it seems to me like, just my way of thinking, that it would make more sense to have the parking away from the building and use existing structure to add on versus the other way around, just from a cost perspective. So I was wondering if we had, have we done any work to analyze that to see which?
What we analyzed was the fact that Desiree mentioned that if you're gonna have children that don't necessarily wanna play basketball, don't necessarily wanna be involved in the after-school program, but are an at-risk child who may be slightly aggressive.
What do you mean by at-risk?
A child who is, is not wanting to be in a program such as the after-school program or, or summer program then across the street, as Desiree said, the program that she was encouraging. You explain that a little bit if you like.
Pretty much is, if the program is across the street, I know you said as far as staff and being able to manage both programs, if we add it on to our facility as well, we would still have to hire staff to manage that side of the building because it's complete different from the after-school program or any of our other programs ran. We would actually have to hire someone to function and manage the boxing facility itself. So we could still manage, but we're gonna have to hire staff either way, whether it's across the street or attached to our building. But it's just the after-school program and youth basketball, things like that, will interfere with a whole different type of program, which is boxing.
So I'll ask you then, so have we done a cost analysis on what makes more sense from a financial perspective? Have we done that?
I have not.
Okay.
And what would that do for us? We're still putting paving down, we're still putting park. If you put a building up, you're still building the building.
So, so have we done, you said no, we haven't done that?
I have not.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, have we done a cost analysis to figure out which?
We've done an analysis of what it's gonna cost to put a parking lot in and the program or something.
So have you done, I mean, and that's a simple, simple question, I'm just asking a simple question, and I know you're gonna say, have we done a cost comparison on which, which way makes more sense from a financial perspective? Not just a yes or a no, I'm just asking a question. I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be, I'm just asking a simple question, you know, and, and the thing about it is that, you know, we asked, I asked the same question two weeks ago and we haven't gotten a response back. I did talk to Desiree, and she did, and I do appreciate her talking to me, but I'm just asking a simple question. Have we done a cost analysis to determine which way makes more economical sense? And that's a yes or a no?
It's a no because there's no need. You're still putting a parking lot down, you're still building the building, either
That's all the questions I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more questions? That's it, we're gonna go into our regular section. Roll call, Key.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
Pass the question. Leave us where I put it.
Let us pray. Gracious God, everlasting Father, it's in the name of your darling son, Jesus, we thank you for this body politic, we thank you for the mayor, we thank you for the councilmen and councilwomen, we thank you dear God for rule and authority, we thank you dear God for this great nation, the United States of America. Father, we do pray now for our mayor, for the council, we pray for the citizens of this great city. We pray dear God that as these men and women make rules and regulations that govern the lives of the citizens of this great city, that they take into consideration that all things are done decent and in order, and that God sits high and they look down low. We pray for the wisdom of heaven to lead, to guide them, to empower them to make the godly choice and the godly decisions. Dear God, we do give you the praise, the glory and the honor, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Sir, I'd invite all active and retired military to render a proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Any council report? If not, mayor?
Our condolences, thoughts and prayers go out to Mr. Jimmy McGinnis' family. Jimmy was a radio dispatcher with the city for over 30 years and his death occurred on, at 5:00 Monday morning, and he'll be dearly missed here with the city of Hammond. On that note, cleanest city, we won the state contest for the 12th year. So congratulations goes out to the garden club, the ladies. One of the things that a lot of people don't realize is there's a scrapbook that is part of this judging, which attests to everything that's done during the course of year by Doris St. Seer and Robert Fields and a lot of volunteers that are out there doing a lot of work. And thanks to everyone that's involved in that process, Parks and Grounds, Whitney, Streets Department as well. So job well done, a lot of pride in our city workers for wanting to be the cleanest city. So to do it 12 years in a row, we had a few people that really wanted it badly this year and we were able to get it again for the 12th year, so great job to Team Hammond. Pecan Street has a problem with it right now, so if you're heading back down through town, through Pecan, it's closed down. There's some road work that's being done. I'm not sure if it's a water line that's busted or not, but we have a problem and the roads closed, that just came to my attention. The summer program, once again, First Guaranteed Bank, one of our great corporate sponsors who does so much for the city, gave us another $10,000 for the program, which they've done every summer for many years, so we thank you, First Guaranteed Bank, for what you do for our children, 125 children?
We actually got 140 now.
140 now are in the program, so it should be a good summer for kids in, in the city of Hammond. And I just wanna thank everyone once again for remembering Jimmy's family at these hard times, and also for those who know teachers, it's Teacher Appreciation Day, so thank you to all the teachers out there making our children more prepared for the world that we live in and, and to be productive citizens as they get older, so thanks to the teachers. Thank you, sir.
Are there any new business in the order that might be recognized? If not, approve a minutes?
Second. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Councilman Jason Hood.
Hi.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Resolution none, old business none, new business, number one.
Number one, a resolution to approve best stop number 34 located at 2201 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, 70403, to sell high-low alcohol. The owner is Janu LLC.
This is an existing convenience store, it's over by the truck stop, it's the Shell Station, and they have changed ownership. So they're just kinda going right along with what they've been doing in the past. It's a convenience store, they wanna sell packaged liquor, they've met all the requirements that I've asked them to meet. We do have a representative here tonight, I'm gonna bring him up, if you have any questions, he'll be happy to answer them.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Janu LLC, Best Stop 34, 2201 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, 70403. And my name is Surmukh Singh, I'm a manager for this, this convenience store, gas station.
Can you do understand that here in the city of Hammond, the chief would check from time to time, underage?
Yes.
Okay. I need to make aware of all your employees, make sure.
Yes, yes. 21 years old for liquor and 18 years for cigarette.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Need a motion. Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Hi.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved. Number two, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into contract on behalf of the city of Hammond with BFI Way Services LLC doing business as Republic Services of Latin Rouge. This is for collection of garbage dumpsters in the amount of $31,473.96. Janet Thurman.
Our current contract will come to end June 30th, so we put out a new request for proposals. We did receive three bids. The lowest proposal is actually our current contractor, which would be a five republic, so we're just asking the council to approve the mayor to enter into contract.
Is the price, is the price the same as the last?
No, sir, it went up a slight, but we did add a couple more dumpsters to it, because we have the new fire headquarters and we doing an alleyway project. But it's almost the same. If you would take them dumpsters out, it would be the same, basically.
Motion.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Hi.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved. Number three, a resolution supporting the submission of an AARP Community Challenge Grant application of up to $20,000 for improvement to Kate Square Park, Charles Roshan.
Evening. This one's pretty self-explanatory. I will note that this is one that Amanda, my grants writer, kinda stumbled on. She was doing research for a completely unrelated project. Stumbled across this one, has a really close deadline. When we ever come across something like that, rather than let the funds go by, we try to look at what we've applied for, maybe we haven't got a response back, maybe we've been denied. I think you remember, we came to the council several months back, there was a Lowe's grant we applied for funding, we didn't get that one. So we're readapting that application for this, this opportunity. Any questions?
Question.
I have a question.
Sure.
So this is the only park that we have that needs?
Oh, I'm sure it's not. It's one that Councilman Hood, the mayor, had asked us to look into, doing something with the playground structure, either the existing playground structure and playground area, or adding a new structure, or doing something in both.
That was the one where something was too close to our plans?
Yes, one of the, one of the issues we have now is that the playground safety requirements have evolved and some of the equipment in that park is, is not in line with current safety guidelines. So we're looking at some options to, to bring it into compliance. They're not major changes, but it's playground equipment, playground equipment can be kind of expensive, so we're looking at trying to...
Safety for the children.
Absolutely, safety is first and foremost, and trying to look at what we have and see if we can make it more dynamic. That park, as I'm sure you all know, is used very heavily, so we're trying to, you know, give the kids that, that use that park something a little more dynamic and, and fun to play on, and safer as well.
Motion.
You good?
Yeah.
Second. Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Hi.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Hi.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number four, a resolution to ratify an award bid received May 4, 2018, for Whitmore Sewer Rehabilitation, project number 61611804, Webb Anderson.
You should have hyperlink bid summary and the bid tab, as usual. We received seven bids, as you can see, and it did come in within the budget, so we recommend award to In situ Form Technologies in the amount of $213,020. I think the estimate was right at 230.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Hi.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved.
If y'all remember when Chuck first, oh, go ahead, I'm waiting on him. Yeah.
Is Chuck coming to do this, or?
No, I'm, I'm gonna do it for him.
Because we were gonna just ask.
If you want him, I can, no, he couldn't be here.
Number five, a resolution to approve final acceptance of bridge rehabilitation, Club Deluxe Road at Arnold's Creek, W2-L2, Webb Anderson.
As I was saying, if y'all remember, Chuck brought a picture the first time and showed y'all what the situation looked like. I think the parish is sharing these, in the cost of this project, and as you see, that's the complete, completed project.
You guys have a, Mr. President, still got a question. Did you guys have a breakdown on just, just, I always like to know about these type of things, like what was the breakdown on the shared cost for that, do you know?
It was half, I mean, whatever the total was.
It was half the cost, I don't know exactly how much it was.
Whatever the total cost was gonna be, the parish was gonna fund half of it and we were gonna...
So that's what happened, so we're...
So they'll reimburse you for half of it.
I would say it was close to 75,000.
I think that's about right, it was, it was right around 150,000.
I'm glad you said Chuck, Chuck's sister-in-law passed away and that's why he's not here, so he would keep his family in prayers as well.
Okay. You had a good job, I pass by that every day, so I saw.
It was in bad shape.
See, and I always thought it was in bad shape, so I'm glad we got that taken care of, so.
So we recommend acceptance, final acceptance of that job.
Motion.
Second. Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Hi.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved. Number six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an owner-engineer agreement with Principal Engineering, Inc., Henry I. DeFranco Jr., for identifying and obtaining LOMR approvals from FEMA funded by available drainage improvement FY2018, funds project number 42011806, Webb Anderson.
This has been discussed for a long time, I think. People, everybody who pays flood insurance knows in some areas that don't flood, some, some of the base flood elevations may be a little off, as we, as we would think, but FEMA has them somewhere that might be a little out of line. This, this company, Principal Engineering and Henry DeFranco, they specialize in this and, and since the drainage projects came in well within budget, we thought, go ahead and allow them at least to start the study. Citywide, she said LOMR, that stands for Letter of Map Revision. So they study all areas of the city and decide if there's been flaws in FEMA's fire maps, or if there's areas where drainage improvements have been done that might reduce the level of the water when, when it does rain. So this is to hire Principal Engineering to do a study, basically it's a phase one study to determine areas that might be, you know, that might be susceptible to this, to, to apply for a LOMR.
We've had a number of residents that had their flood insurance triple.
Right.
Go higher than what it had been in the past, so this is something that's been asked for, for a long time.
So what does it do, I mean, so, because help me, help me understand.
If you have a, if you have a flood elevation on your property, and they seem to think that it's below flood elevation, it can take, the LOMAs come into place and it'll take a $2,000, $1,500, $3,000 bill and turn it into a $6,000 or $800 or $900 bill, so it cuts it at least in half.
So we will do this, so if I understand in layman terms, we're gonna, we're gonna look at, analyze entire city through this process?
Yes, he's going to...
And then each piece of property will have, will be reviewed for what, what it needs, what is the elevation needs to be?
What areas might be eligible for, or to at least make the attempt with FEMA to move forward. So phase one, the benefits rely, you know, the directly experience reduction in flood insurance premiums, that's, that's, that's all it's about, is reducing that elevation, so...
So will every homeowner get a notification after this is done?
It's your responsibility as a homeowner to, to get this out, get a LOMR, a lot of people don't know about LOMRs, and, but when they get that insurance bill, they're like, what the heck, what do I do, so?
Yeah, I would think if any, any areas are successful, that people would be notified somehow if that happens, because I think it only happens for six months to a year maybe, that you can reapply and the, also the cost of construction, you know, everybody's having to build so high, it reduces the amount of fill you have to put on a lot if, if it's lowered. Phase, phase one is area of opportunity and scope development, so from there, once they figure out where we can move forward, he can move forward with...
And how much does a whole study gonna cost?
It's not to exceed $35,000. They have a fee schedule.
And you saying if this study is done, we can get FEMA to change?
They've been successful getting them changed in other, in other cities in the state.
I just had a situation on a property I sold on South Cypress, had flooded since late 70s. They didn't go up on their flood insurance, they canceled their policy because of previous losses. FEMA canceled their flood policy, and this woman has a mortgage on her house, canceled.
So how will this process?
Forty years.
Probably still will.
Forty years.
Help this with, how will this process, with this process?
Mr. President, I've been working on this for quite a while, it's Mr. Marshall, and they, this company was successful in getting a whole neighborhood reclassified, so basically in layman terms, they, they get FEMA to reclassify your, an existing area and the flood, and change the flood map. If they change, change the flood map, you have the opportunity to get your, your flood insurance lowered. And so there have been a lot of residents and constituents in District 2, north of the railroad tracks, I pay a high rate of flood insurance. I know my neighbor Alexis DeCory, I don't think she minds me saying, she pays a lot of flood insurance. So these folks were able to get a whole neighborhood in Madisonville or Mandeville reclassified, save the constituents a lot of money.
I think that at least the phase one is a, is a...
I was just wanting to know, I was just wanting to learn, learn about what you're doing, that's good, good, answer my question.
Hi. May I speak? Yes, Carly Gonzalez, 905 West Dakota. I just, I didn't even know this was on the agenda and I wanted to commend you for this, this would be a wonderful thing, I hope that you pass it. I am one of those people in, in District 2. My house has been there since 1952 and my grandfather built it, never, ever has flooded. I am below base flood elevation, and I'll tell you on record, I pay about $1,800 a year in flood insurance, and it is absurd, because it does not flood over there, and I think it was improperly measured or whatever it is that they do, so I hope you pass it.
Louis Bostick, 112 Elm Drive. We have, I would like to know how you get in touch with these LOMR representatives, Webb, to discuss this with them. When this map was redrawn, what, about eight years ago, six years ago? I went out to the parish office and tried to discuss this with them, I got nowhere. But we, we on College Drive, Jerry, oh, my non-verbal brain just went out. Cor Geals was able to get a major drainage project on Elm Drive, from College to the canal. We have three-foot drainage culverts underneath the, on each side of the street with catch basins. We didn't flood before, now we hardly have any water in the yard, and we're still in a flood zone and they're paying ridiculous, I mean, one person will pay $35, another person will pay $450. And all I wanted to do was discuss this with the people, is there any way?
Well, that's what these people will do.
How do we, how do we get in touch with them? I mean...
This firm will get in touch with them? They've, they've got experience with them. It's very hard for a citizen, I think, to get in touch with FEMA and talk about it.
Well, I would like to talk to these folks and see...
I thought he was gonna be here.
Yeah, yeah, because we've got nowhere and it's...
I will get him to come to me and to discuss it a little bit further with you.
It's like you say, it's absurd, you would never...
Well, that's what they'll do, they're gonna study, we, we'll work with them and give them any improvements we've done to any drainage all over the city, and they'll use that also to help reduce the base flood elevations.
I paid off my mortgage, so I could cancel the flood insurance. I'd like to have that back.
Good job.
Yes, ma'am.
As long as they can change it. As long as they can change it.
This is really just to look and make, to see if, I believe there's going to be some locations where they will be able to, but this is to find out where they are and then move forward, hopefully after that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Webb.
Number seven, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a maintenance agreement including mowing and litter pickup for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, between the city of Hammond and the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, Lacey Land.
This is our annual agreement. We sign, we actually cut the grass on a lot of DOTD right-of-ways, and then they reimburse us for that work. So, this is just the contract tool that enables us to seek that reimbursement at the end of the year.
Okay, this says litter pickup and mowing, because I know just the other day, they were on 190 in that section mowing, and they hit some paper, and now it looks like a trash, like a trash dump down there, so are they really picking up the paper before?
This is us, right?
Yeah.
If it was us...
It was us.
They are supposed to pick up all the paper before they put the mowers through. There's actually a crew of men, and there's one or two who go in front and take the time to pick up all the litter. Sometimes, because it may be buried under, in a hole or under grass, they may miss it, and then they pick it up afterwards if it's gotten shredded.
I gave Whitney a call today because I passed in front of Enterprise, and we had a mower, someone cutting, and I guess occasionally they do get to where they don't want to get off the mower, or we don't get there first, and it blew, just what you said.
From one piece to a thousand.
Every now and then, we just have to have a conversation with our folks.
Yeah, because I had some people happy about the fact that we weren't clean city, but were saying that it was all a sham.
It's an everyday fight.
I would say it's not a sham, it's an everyday fight. Many of us in this room, including Louise Bostick, can attest to the fact that we're out every day picking up trash. The city of Hammond has two employees every day, regardless of the holiday or regular day, who pick up trash. We also have the inmate litter crew that goes out routinely, and they often coordinate with our grounds department so that they can pick up the trash ahead of the grounds people who are coming that very next day. But because we have such a litter problem, sometimes cups get thrown down there, whatever, and they think it's clean and ready to go, so it's a constant problem, and it's something that we encourage everyone to come and help volunteer for those days, everyone, when you see trash, pick it up. That's the best thing that we could do, is all get out and really pick up the trash instead of just talking about all the trash.
I think one thing about that, not to get off the subject, but, you know, when we put out trash, we have, I mean, I grew, I lived in a city in Orlando, and on Trash Day was pretty, it was just as pretty as any other day, where we have standardized, you know, garbage pickup cans with lids on top and those things, you know, you look, imagine just the amount of litter that comes from just the way we actually put trash out in our community. I wish we would talk about those things as well, because as a group, because that leads to a lot of litter in the city because of the way we just put trash out and the way trash is picked up, just adds to the problem, just...
Well, I think it's educational. Janice mentioned something to me a couple years ago, it shocked me, and basically, the comment was, and I don't know if you remember saying this, but, you know, back in the day, people threw trash out the windows so people could have jobs. And I was shocked that she said that.
Isn't that so crazy?
Create jobs.
That's just so crazy.
So, it's just a change of mindset and education, pride, hoping people take pride in the community.
And as a backdrop to that, we're looking for volunteers, because this October, there's going to be a parish-wide cleanup. So, we're already recruiting people, and we also talk to people about cleaning up, not just on, you know, a big cleanup day, but all...
All the time, right.
We talked to the Pocket Posse and a couple other social clubs and stuff, so some of them have already started going into the neighborhoods and picking up trash, and we'll be also coming out in October, so if anybody want to come in, if you just want to pick up on your street, that'd be good enough. But we would like everybody to please volunteer, come out if you can, they're going to be refreshments, they're going to be supplying the pickup sticks, the gloves, and the trash bags, so I'm always picking up trash in my neighborhood, and it looks so much better when the trash picked up and the grass is cut, so I commend that part. But I was being told about the fact that they hitting that paper and letting it fly.
Anytime we see that, just let us know, and we'll send a crew back over there to take care of that. And I know you've done that in the past, so thank you for that, too. And to Councilman Marshall's comment, that has already been considered in our new bid for trash services.
That's why I was hoping.
It's something that we handled when we did our recycling, and we're actually looking at some options for the trash.
I think that's a good thing for us to consider as a city, so I applaud you for that.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Final adoption of an ordinance to declare a surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below to sell on GoogleDeals.com. Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number two, final adoption of an ordinance to approve and declare police confiscated bikes a surplus, and to be donated to churches and other nonprofit organizations, there are 13 seized bikes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number three, final adoption of an ordinance declaring any emergency restraint, share surplus property, and providing for a donation to benefit public safety to the Tansville Parish Sheriff Office.
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number four, final adoption of an ordinance to approve budget change form 18-09, transferring $125,000 from Michael J. Kennison, Recreation, Sales Tax Fund 203, to Parking Improvements FY 2018, project number 42011711, for a revised project budget of $200,000.
I have a question, Mr. President, to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, would you have any problems with us taking a little bit of time and just maybe reviewing that one more time, just to see if it makes sense to look at the, look at expanding the facility versus, or using the existing parking park that we bought for the parking, so that we could consider that?
I really don't see the need. You're already going to have a cost of moving a gas line, air conditions, that would be more than the cost of building it to a bill. I would recommend that we...
I have one comment. We pushed the bid back, that we were adding this to, two weeks, and the maximum allowable time to push it back is four weeks, so if y'all did do that, we would have to cancel that project, the existing project.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not, I'm just letting you know what it'll do to the existing parking contract.
No, I appreciate the input, okay, thanks.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Introduction of an ordinance set for public hearing, introduction of an ordinance to adopt the city of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2018-2019, in accordance with the procedure set within Section 5-03 of the City of Hammond Charter, say the name.[1651.82]